I will call the Board of Selectmen's December 2nd, 2024 meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. We're going to take care of a little bit of business till we get to our 6:05 appointment. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $96,606.88.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's November 18th, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's November 21st, 2024, open meeting and executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to sign the seasonal population increase estimation form for the 2025 ABCC form.
Did we see that?
We did. It was in your packet.
Oh.
It's something they ask for every year.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I saw it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't see it in the packet.
What they're asking for is how much does your community increase during the summer? And we've come to an estimate of about 10% because of the people on Canoma Point and Lufkin Point.
Okay, so it's just over standard, not from the
Right.
From last summer.
Right, so we use the Department of Revenue's interim estimate that gets updated every year
Yeah.
from the federal census, and then we tack 10% onto that, whatever the number is.
And this is for a ABCC?
Yes.
Yeah, they need to have an idea of how many people are in the community.
And that's overnight people or people driving through and stopping and sticking around?
That's overnight people.
Overnight people.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to sign the renewal certification form for calendar year 2025 for the ABCC.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Table.
We're going to be tabling the deed conveying the property. There was a letter in the folder that you probably read from the merchants group. They have sadly decided that they are no longer going to be the Essex Merchants Group, and they have asked the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of $275. So I will entertain a motion to accept the gift in the amount of $275 from the Essex Merchants Group to be used toward beautification of the causeway.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of the Mass Cultural Council's Local Cultural Council Grant Program Contract in the amount of $5,700.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider the request from David Brown, Greenbow Corporation DBA Shays Riverside, to remain closed for repairs and renovations until the spring of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider a request from the Friends of the Essex Elementary School to use town property to host their fifth annual Friends of the Essex Elementary School Polar Plunge at Front Beach at Canoma Point, starting at 9:30 a.m. on Sunday morning, January 12th, 2025, and to grant a five-hour waiver of resident parking restrictions around Canoma Point from 7 a.m. to noon.
I heard Selectmen had to be in that.
I don't know that you could pay me enough to do that. Alva, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Table.
We're tabling the consideration for
I know that if we nominate you, you either have to plunge or you have to pay. That's the thing.
Is that what it is?
That's the thing.
On the police vehicles, since you don't meet again till December 16th, does anyone have an idea? Like, what is the take on what should be purchased? You going to leave that up to the finance committee? Are you going to make a recommendation?
So the chief of police, during our last conversation, he's still pretty insistent that he would like a pickup truck and a line cruiser. The finance committee's preference is that they get two line vehicles. The chief has reached out to the finance committee chair and asked to be on their agenda this Thursday evening. He would like to go and make his case for why he feels that a pickup truck is a beneficial vehicle for the department. So I know that last I spoke with the FinCom chair, she was waiting to see if she had a quorum. So I think we should probably table this until we hear
So can the police chief write up why he feels it's necessary and send it to us also so that we understand why he feels that a pickup truck is required?
Sure.
I just feel like, what is the benefit of having a pickup truck?
I can tell you in my conversations with the chief, I can give you some of I mean, certainly a write-up from him is better than me relaying. But the pickup truck is beneficial in many different ways. One is it can pull the signboards. However, that would not be the top argument because so can the SUVs. They're great for being able to haul cones, sawhorses. When they have the car show, they can use the pickup truck for things in the back. If there is an accident and somebody falls off a bicycle, they've been known to put the bicycle in the back of the pickup truck. The other reason that we use our pickup truck in town, that a lot of people, because they don't even realize that police pickup truck is a police vehicle, we use it for undercover, I'm going to say undercover operations. But when the police department is doing detective work, they do use our pickup truck on side streets to monitor houses, to monitor people. So it is a vehicle that is kind of benign, and you don't really realize it is part of the fleet. I know that when we drive across the causeway and we see it parked at Essex Wine Exchange, people don't even realize it's a police vehicle. So that is one of the reasons, but we can
Right, and at the end of the day, it's up to the Selectmen to determine what you want to order.
Yeah, and that's why, so a couple of things is what is the criteria that they use? You know, like Wyatt Durango versus a Chevy, or Wyatt blah 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 versus understanding what their usage is? If that's the case and they feel that, you know, it's beneficial, does that mean we have to have an eight-foot bed versus a six-foot bed? Does that mean, I mean, all of those things add to the cost of a
What is the cost difference between a line cruiser, which is an SUV?
It's not that much because the pickup truck is not set up for transport. So there's extra costs into a cruiser, even though the car costs less. Pickup truck costs more, I believe, but has less outfitting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's fine. I mean, do you want to wait for the finance committee to see what their recommendation is?
Well, I would assume
It's just that I know that we need cars, and I'm
Yeah, yeah, we want to get them as soon as possible, and I don't want it to hold up because of a truck. But if this, you know, what's the reasoning? I mean, if you don't have the why, then why are we voting on something if we don't have the reason why?
Yeah, this was only on here as a placeholder because we didn't know whether they'd have a recommendation by now, but they don't. So, okay, it'll have to go to the 16th.
Okay, so we do have a hearing at 6:05. I apologize for the delay. So Steve, if you want to join us at the end of the table
This chair rolls.
Yeah, roll the chair right over. So I will entertain a motion to open the tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors to determine and vote on the following. Steve, do you, I see that Mike is joining. Mike and Tina are actually online. Do you want to call your Board to Order before we go forward?
Sure, I'd like to call the Board of Assessors to Order at 6:05
Perfect.
Monday, December 2nd.
Excellent, and I will entertain a motion to open the hearing for the tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors to determine and vote on the following. So this is where Steve has handed, done a handout that's before us. He's going to go through each one, and then we have to take a vote on each bullet separately. So Steve, if you want to go through and do the tax talk.
Yep, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So just quickly before, usually I just go over a quick little recap of what the values did this year. Generally, the single families went up about 5%. Condominiums about 7%. And the commercial went up about 10% to 12%. So we're continuing.
Do you have an understanding of why the single family went up only 5 and a condo went up 7?
Yeah, generally it just has to do with the data set that we're using.
Of the state?
Yeah, so they define, each fiscal year, they define the range of, date range of sales that you'll use. You know, and sometimes 5 and 7% is roughly pretty close to each other. And so you'll see some kind of ebbs and flows in the values as, you know, time evolves and different data sets fall into place. And then new growth is about $154,000. That's about 20% higher than our three-year average. So, you know, I attribute that a lot to, really to Mike and Tina who are on this call tonight. They've been, you know, very active in the field and closing a lot of older building permits. So that's been great, and it reflects in our new growth numbers. All right, jumping in, as suggested, I'm going to ask you to take four votes tonight. I'll go through each one individually, have you take the vote, and then we can move on to the next one. Unless you want to hear a quick spiel about all of them, and then we can go back and vote.
You do always pass out a tax recap chart. Is that what I see in front of you? Can I, can we have those, or is that just your copy?
No, you can have them. I didn't make copies of everybody, but you can enter it into the Is there any specific question?
No, generally I just take them home and I look at them. I compare year over year. Oh, so we only have one copy here?
Yeah.
All right, you keep it.
No, you can have it. I don't need it.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, we can get that right off of the system.
Okay, all right, Steve, go ahead.
Yep, so what those do is those are the comparison reports. So those will compare. Generally, they'll look back two or three years and give you rolling averages and comparisons, so. All right, so the first one is select a residential factor. So what this is, is basically just a split tax rate. So Essex historically has always gone with a residential factor of one, which is a uniform tax rate. That means that the same tax rate is applied to all the residential and commercial and personal property. So the Board of Assessors is recommending a residential factor of one again this year.
I will entertain a motion to move to adopt the residential factor of one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open space discount, so this is a, similarly to a residential and commercial shift. This is a, well, you can be a second rate if you have a uniform tax rate, or a third rate if you split the residential, commercial base to afford a discount to open space parcels. The Board of Assessors has to first define what would constitute open space, and there's some leniency in the law on how we define that. And we also have to classify them as open space. The Board of Assessors does not have, has not adopted open space classification, nor have we classified any parcels as open space. So for that reason, we recommend to not adopt an open space discount.
I will entertain a motion to move not to adopt an open space discount.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And a residential exemption is, basically, it's a way to discount the taxes for individuals that live in a community versus those that own property but don't. So generally, you see the larger communities. Some of the communities down the Cape where a large percentage of housing inventory is for rental use only. So a lot of three families, four families, or, you know, larger residential apartment buildings. So like Somerville, Everett, Malden, like those types of communities, you'll see residential exemption where a large percentage of their taxable base is owned by landowners that don't reside in the community. So that way, you shift some of the burden onto them. And the residential exemption, meaning that if you can claim residency, you get an exemption, and it's usually stated by not a different rate, but an exempt amount off your tax bill, whether it be $100, $200, $300,000. So if you have a $600,000 assessment, and the first 300 is exempt, then your taxes is calculated off $300,000.
Steve, what do you estimate is the owners outside of, that don't live in town in Essex?
What do I estimate? I really don't have, I've heard numbers thrown around of like 10%.
I think that's the same 10% we talked about earlier, pretty much.
I don't really, that's honestly just things I picked up along the way. I don't have any data that supports
Why would we have an exemption? Why would we, I mean, just if it's a three family and there's three families living in it, why would we have any type of tax exemption?
The exemption would go to the homeowners that claim primary domicile in Essex. So you would get a break, hypothetically, if you live in Essex.
And you have a multifamily.
Well, if you own the multifamily, you get taxed at the full rate. If you own a, well, actually, you can own a multifamily in both scenarios. If you own a multifamily and live in that multifamily, then you will benefit from the exemption. But what you have to be careful of in a town like Essex is that it's kind of, you have, the exempt amounts are based off the average, and the rate, the rate will change because you're redistributing the burden within the residential class. And as, this is a very general rule, but as you approach the average, even with the exemption, the tax rate's higher, so you end up paying about the same amount of taxes. So there's kind of like a break-even point. Once you get over that average, you're paying more than you would have with a residential, without a residential exemption. So you're kind of, you're not only, you know, I use the term, but you're not only penalizing people who own income property in town by making them pay more, you're penalizing folks that have a more expensive-than-average home.
It works out if there's a high density of non-owner occupied, like in Somerville, you know, or on the Cape, or whatever. But it doesn't work very well if you don't have that many instances of
I mean, I have a two-family, but I don't want an exemption. If I have tenants that go to the school system, I want to make sure my taxes pay for that, so.
Yeah, it's the way, really, just to redistribute the taxes when you have large, you know, property managers that are buying up tons of three families, four families, and using them to make money at the, you know, at the expense of somebody who's lived there for, you know, 40 years. It's just a way to kind of give them a break. And the small commercial exemption
Let me vote on number three, Steve, so that's okay. I will entertain a motion to vote to move not to adopt a residential exemption.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then the small commercial exemption is, this is something that's generally used sparingly. Like, A, the state has to designate small commercial businesses that qualify for this exemption. I don't believe Essex has any. But also, it is, it would be a shift in the rate. So any discount afforded to the small commercial that qualified would be additional burden that's shifted onto the rest of the residential class. And generally, again, Essex is kind of an anomaly because there's a lot of, like, homegrown businesses, people who live here also own the business. But generally, the small businesses that qualify are leasing space or renting space from a landlord. And it's the person who owns the property gets the tax break, not the small business. So it's kind of misleading. It's like, if you rent to a small business, you could get a tax break. But the small business itself's not getting the break, and you're making, you know, an assumption that there'll be some pass-through of savings, which, you know, generally is not the case.
I'm going to recommend, before you move on to the last thing, which is authority to sign, you might ask whether there's any member of the public who wants to speak about any of these things.
Because it's a hearing.
You could reconsider any of these votes if you have something that comes in.
Okay, so let me take the motion on this before we do that. I will entertain a motion to move to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any member of the public online that wishes to speak to the tax classification discussion that we just had? If you would like to speak to it, please unmute yourself and identify yourself with name and address. Hearing, no comments online. Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak to this? Okay. Having no comment about the tax classification hearing, I will entertain a motion to vote to grant the authority to the Board of Assessors Chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen on the DOR gateway.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to close the hearing with the Board of Assessors.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's, select, oh my God, thinking I'm still
Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors, at what time is it?
6:21.
At 6:21, Monday, December 2nd.
So moved.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here it is.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Nate, if you want to join us, you can either come to the podium. If you want to come to the end of the table, wherever you're more comfortable. Perfect, you can roll that chair right back and sit beside Alva. So we, for everybody joining us online, we have Nathan Woodman with us this evening. On the agenda, there's a discussion about the possibility to construct the tennis and/or pickleball courts at Centennial Grove. So the Board of Selectmen received possible court location map in our packets. It looks like this.
Yeah, and that's something I put together, not Nate. He put another one together.
Yeah, I have that too.
Yeah.
Okay, so just for some historical perspective, as we know, there have been several fundraising efforts to replace the tennis courts here at Shepherd Memorial. And it's hit a couple of stalls between the costs associated with such. There were some fundraising efforts that were kind of stalled a little bit. Then there was the issue of the Shepherd Memorial flooding, and maybe the courts would be better placed at Centennial Grove. I know that the Economic Development Committee was looking at that because where they're trying to make that a rentable facility, they thought that may be just yet another opportunity for rental income, to have that up there and make it more appealing to people that would want to rent it for some sort of a commercial endeavor, whether it's a outing or not necessarily a wedding. But if there was some sort of a function that wanted to use the courts, it could be more appealing. So I know that Brendan and I met with the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, as well as Dan Mayer, when we were dealing with the pavilion walkthroughs, and we started talking about the possibility of bringing it up to Centennial Grove. And it sounds like, I'm going to have Nate take over in a minute, but it sounds like in dealing with the ALS and Nate being part of the crew, the volunteer crew that Dan Mayer was spearheading, Nate also liked this idea and wanted to kind of get some more momentum moving. So Nate, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so I think the motion is to whether or not to consider the, you know, a few different sites at Centennial Grove. Sorry. Yes, thank you. Okay, great.
Perfect.
All right, as an alternative location for whether it be tennis courts or mixed-use courts, which would be tennis courts plus pickleball, right? I've been, and, you know, so that's really what's on the agenda, right? I think there's a few kind of like facts or discussion that we can either have or not about, you know, proposals and reasons why not to do it here, right? Versus why to do it at Centennial Grove. But I can make a few points at a very high level, if you want me to, right? Or we could just kind of, you know, just can answer questions. I mean, I've spoken to, you know, Marty Flood, Dan Mayer, right? You know, kind of representing some of what they've said, you know, to me about, you know, kind of the, some of the hiccups that have happened along the way, and about some of the, you know, I guess more importantly, some of the desire to start, you know, using the Grove, right, you know, kind of for, as you said, kind of as a second site, you know, for recreation. So I can answer questions about those things as needed. Do you want me to just kind of go through a whole bunch of different facts? How should I approach?
Yeah, I mean, generally, so, I mean, generally, I'm in favor of the courts going up to Centennial Grove. I think it would be, you know, not that it's going to be a sports facility, but I think we already have a basketball court up there. Now we have the pavilion. We're going to start looking at, you know, things that we're going to do to the Grove House. I think it's a wonderful idea if we can find the land that's going to accept this court. I know Brendan did a quick schematic of what the land looks like and where it may potentially go. I know that you are going to work with a wetland scientist, so if you want to give us a little bit of that conversation, because I'm not sure the full board knows each step that's happened. So why don't you bring us from the day you started chatting with Dan and Marty, and bring us forward to today, and then we can do a little straw poll, since the Board manages the Grove.
Okay, so so when this, when we brought the, when we started with this idea, there was also a meeting at the DPW that was about two weeks ago, which was pretty well-attended, right? You know, about the potential to, about the issues that are, that the site has currently, which I think are well-known, you know, could compaction, could do heaving. It's not a full-size tennis court as is, so therefore it would need to be expanded, right? It's a change of use, especially if you start including, if you do anything more than just, you know, the tennis courts, right, if you go tennis courts to pickleball. There's hesitation by the town to dig deeper, by the DPW to dig deeper because, in order to improve the compaction. Plus, the fact that it is a residential area, and if you end up being mixed-use and pickleball, creates a bunch of issues for me personally, because I'm the nearest neighbor. But there's also eight residents, you know, kind of within 500 feet. I've reviewed all the Manchester studies and kind of like what happened there. Again, I have them all summarized and documented here, so if you want to ask any questions about that, we could do that. So there's a laundry list of reasons of like why not to do it here, right? And so then we started, you know, to try to find a, you know, an alternative, and we started thinking about the Centennial Grove sites, okay? The only objection that the DPW potentially had was that you cannot do any building or you cannot do any, you know, site work within 400 feet of the town well, right? But there are multiple, you know, kind of open-site locations, you know, up there that aren't within that well area, right? So that was their only objection, make sure it's not within 400 feet of the well, okay? So we kind of cleared that bar. The next part was to have the site just reviewed by an environmental scientist. We did that unofficially, and just, you know, kind of like I can, you know, it was done by a resident, town resident. Her name's Rebecca Davis. She's an environmental scientist, works for the state. You know, she said that she couldn't make it official, right? Because she said if it, if there was ever any dispute, she'd have to be the person that mitigated it, right? And so, but she said she, there's other people, you know, that she knows that she could point us to if we needed to do an official site. So I ended up doing a walkthrough with her. Neither of the proposed locations had, neither of the proposed locations, she could determine, you know, kind of, had no red flags. That's what she said, right, you know, specifically. And, you know, she said that there are, if you are within 120 feet of the wetland, you have to do some mitigation during construction, but you can still do it. But again, both sites, there's enough room to put tennis courts more than 120 feet away.
100 feet, 100 feet.
Or whatever, yeah. But there was just plenty of room, you know, that was the, you know, that was the, that was the consideration. I mean, one other thing there too, I kind of marked on this sheet here that the closest residents to the proposed sites are plus 900 feet away, right? And the people that did the Manchester study, the, you know, the company that did it is called Pickleball LLC, and they kind of specialize in this area. They have a list of recommendations online. They basically say, do not, do not try to put pickleball within 500 feet of residents if you can, if you can avoid it, right? They said, at the distance of 900 feet, there are very, very rarely any complaints.
Is the 500 feet open space, no vegetation?
Yeah, yeah, which is here, you know, so the places that are impacted here within the 500 feet or the residence anyways, is that you have, there you have my house. We have the new house underneath, you know, back by the James.
Yeah.
You have the house that's actually right by the bridge.
Yeah.
Is technically within 500 feet and kind of a line of sight as well. You have three or four houses, you know, kind of across Martin Street. And I think there's a couple of residents above that office building. I've just seen somebody out there with a grill before, right?
Yeah, Coughlin's building.
Yeah, and so those are all the, you know, people, residents within 500 feet.
And it's open, like Peter said. The vegetation at Centennial Grove is certainly going to muffle the sound of the ball hitting the racket, so.
So that's, so I don't, unless we need to kind of talk about, I have notes, and you guys are welcome to take them and put them on, you know, just about all, a bunch of potential issues and why the Centennial Grove site might be, might be a better location.
Can I just ask you a simple question, though? You said the meeting at the DPW was well-attended. Well-attended by just the DPW crew, or was there public?
It was public, too.
It was public.
Yeah, so the DPW crew, and I, I don't know everybody, so I can't really, that's where, that's the meeting. I went with Dan Mayer, right, and Marty Flood, right? So I went with them, but there were other people there too. So I went with them, but there were other people there too. Steve Davis, Rebecca's husband, was there, and he was there mostly as a kind of, someone that knows how to play tennis. Right, and I mean, and, you know, and he had been working with, um...
Sarah Dyer.
Yeah, not, but Sarah, but he was, sorry, the gentleman that just passed lives up on Turtleback Road, has the triplets.
Oh, Jim McKenna.
Yeah, Jim McKenna, right. He had been, he had been working with Jim, you know, kind of off and on just about, because Jim used to be a tennis pro. You know, Steve's like, I played, you know, tennis in college, so somehow, you know, I get thrown into this category. And his main point was, you can't play tennis there as-is.
Correct.
Right, it's just it's not large enough, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that was the main point he made. And then there was a, there was a few other people there too, which I, I just, sorry, just don't know who they are.
That's okay.
Would these, um, you have the...
Roughly, yeah, yeah. So this is, this is...
Would they include parking at the site next to the, the courts? Or is the parking supposed to be down where the parking exists now?
Well, I think there, there was two proposed sites, and so we didn't want to talk about one, right?
Yeah, just probably.
So I think what's in that circle right there?
That's the well, yeah.
There was this proposed site and this proposed site.
Yeah.
And this is the, the cottage?
Yeah, and this is the pavilion.
So then the parking?
Is this white, existing park?
Yeah.
Remember, he's, he's going to change that to just be like handicap parking?
Already did. It's okay.
But I think as far as parking is concerned, if you're going to have two or three courts or two courts total and one's going to be dual-function, you're only going to have four, maybe six people down there. And what are the chances that you're going to have, you know, a fully, full parking lot from baseball games and you're not going to be able to squeeze four or five cars down there for tennis or pickleball?
We're making assumptions there and not, I mean, that's why I was asking how many people were at the DPW meeting, because there, you know, there was a large contingency of tennis people that wanted it here, and that's why we had that money sitting in the bank.
Sure.
So I think it really depends. I know that when I ride through Hamilton, Wenum, Hamilton, tennis courts, Wenham.
Hamilton.
It's Wenham, when you take the right. You know, there are times that things lined up with cars. I, I just, we want to make sure that we're thinking about the public and not, I don't play tennis. Maybe I'd play pickleball, but then again, I'd maybe walk.
Manchester has a number of courts, and the only parking is shared with the baseball field.
Down at Sweeney Park.
It's the same, it's basically the same thing that we have.
Where are their courts? I haven't seen them. Are they part of the...
Sweeney Park, yeah, it's where the old skate park was, right?
Oh, okay, so it's right there, next to the parking lot.
Yep.
Where's this a little bit away, and I'm wondering if it's worth putting in four, five, six spaces?
Well, I think that you would probably almost be able to park at the Grove House if you needed four or five cars to park somewhere. Park them up at the Grove House.
Just to, just, the original site was the one that was that you guys went and walked, right? After the fact, with, when I was there with the environmental scientist, and actually Steve brought up too, they were like, why not go to the left of the parking lot? That seemed to be the superior location.
Are you talking about down just below where the restroom facilities are going to be?
Yeah, so between the baseball field and the, and the, where the restroom facilities, they were like, why not use that? It's flat, right?
It's already flat.
There's no power, there's, there is parking there, right? There was just, there was, versus the other site, you had some power lines that you were going to have to move, right? It was somewhat uneven. You, you could fit a site there, but your site selection was probably going to have to be more, you know, considered.
The, the only issue with that, Nate, I'm, I'm very open-minded and willing to entertain. I love the idea of them going there, but you're talking about, I don't know whether we're talking about two or three courts, but that's just going to eliminate parking. Putting the courts there is going to take away parking.
My concern is also, if we did it over in the other section, which is closer to the cottage, we may be renting the cottage, and then you can't park there because the cottage had, you know, that's why...
You also, you also can't have cars go up here during the camp day. And I already spoke with the camp, and they said as long as this facility has a separate entrance from perhaps the main parking lot, maybe it's a path, that's what it is at Sweeney. It's a pretty long path through the woods, or the sidewalk around. They are fine with it because it is not going to be considered part of the camp. But you can't have people going up through the camp to park somewhere. It's not going to be allowed.
Right.
And I think people are going to want to play in the mornings when camp is in session. And the only way to do that is to have a separate access from the parking area.
Okay, so that's the only logical...
So is the area that's shaded in red, is that flat there? Is that, it looks like it's...
I just threw that shape in there. It could even be pulled closer to the ballfields.
So which one?
This one.
Yeah, well, that's, it's probably, you probably can...
Have it down further, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Closer to the ballfields.
It's not taking up this entire location, it's just saying that this entire location is probably buildable.
Yes, yes, yes.
Between this drawing and that drawing.
Okay, so right off the parking lot, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you might come right off the parking lot, yeah.
So you could, you know, I mean, the other, I mean, I think you guys also know is that, you know, Dan Mayer graciously, you know, volunteered to, he said, you know, clear and stump the site, right? So, you know, down at Centennial Grove to prep it, right? So that it's, so that it becomes, you know, readily buildable. And in that process, I don't think it's a far reach to say, let's add five, six spots.
No, it's not, because, and then you just, you just put the courts a little farther back and you leave, have another place for parking, because it's already come, opening out from a parking area.
So Nate, but that brings us to the next point, which is the financial end of things. So as you mentioned, Dan Mayer has been unbelievably generous with everything he's done. But what is the financial plan for this project? So originally, I know that there was a fundraising effort, and the funds went into Marty Flood's nonprofit. I know that community preservation funds were set aside in the amount of $49,999.
For this location here.
Oh, so that'll have to go back as a new project.
Reprogrammed in May, if that's what people...
Right, that was one of the questions.
Okay. So what is the thought around the, the additional funding? Assuming that the Community Preservation Committee would allow for that $49,000 again?
Is Marty online, if any chance?
He's not.
Okay. All right, then I'll do my best to paraphrase what he said, okay? So he said that, right, there's, there's two sources of funding, right? And so the, the fund that he raised, I think he said, has somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 in it, okay? Then there's the $50,000 appropriated for that site, which you, Brendan, I think...
It could be voted to reprogram.
To be repurposed there. What Marty has always, you know, said, he said, they've kind of stalled, first of all, right, he's a little frustrated. Right, he's frustrated that it hasn't moved, right? And so his consideration, he's like, I'm, you know, been sitting on this money. People have donated a good amount of money, it's been sitting in this fund. He goes, if we can't move this now, if we can't see any light, he goes, I'm going to shut it down, right? And we're going to donate the fund to some other, we're going to just get, we're going to close the fund. And we're going to, the money's going to go somewhere else, or it's going to go back to the donors, right? So that's, so he's trying to create some pressure to be like, let's go, let's move, let's make a decision, right? And so when he heard that there was the alternate site, right, he's like, well, I will keep it open because that shows, it'll keep it open until the spring, when the town, you know, votes on to see whether or not they can appropriate the money that way, okay? His assertion, it, we, we don't really know the final cost, right? Some people have said, you know, kind of 200, right? And so we kind of like, it feels like we have like a 100, you know, to, you know, to, yeah, about 100 short, right? Now, you talk to Dan, and Dan's like, I don't think it's going to cost that much, right? Like, I don't really know where...
Well, that, that's a really interesting point, because if all, not all we're going to get, if Dan is capable of doing clearing and stumping, right? If then you need to bring in a contractor to actually compact the base, put everything in, the fencing and all of that, we already tried a novel approach, which was the private funds would be raised to pay for the labor, and the town was going to put in money for materials, but we were not able to find a contractor who wanted to just get materials drop-shipped by the town, because they want to make a profit on the materials. Given that, really, the only way this can happen is if the nonprofit donates the money to the town, and now we're into prevailing wage, and you say, oh, 200,000? No, three, four.
All right, right. So there's, so as far as closing the gap, right? And so, um, there's two things. So Marty, two things. Marty said, he says, if we were able to do pickleball, he thinks he could raise more funds. Check, right? And so it's like, if we end up doing pickleball at that site without the, you know, the restrictions that pickleball would bring downtown, then he thinks that he can get some more money, right? To the, as far as, once the thing's, you know, kind of stumped and we're buying materials, what Dan had proposed, and I think, you know, he threw my name in the ring there, is that we do it through volunteers, just like we did the barn, right? And he was like, we're just riding off the momentum, right?
Yeah, that, that could be done, if you can find somebody with the equipment that does the compaction, somebody with paving, somebody who knows how to then surface the paving.
But does it have to be paving? Can it be, can it be clay?
It still needs compaction.
Right, no, it needs compaction.
Well, I think to a clay court, you'd need a very, very expert. I don't know that there's anyone in Essex or around here.
I'm only asking because when I looked, researched, just a few seconds, I researched it today, it was saying that yes, you can use clay for pickleball, and clay is more cost-effective.
But I don't know how you maintain clay, because we're not very good at that. I don't know that that's going to...
I have no opinion on that.
Just takes one dirt bike, Alva.
I know, I know.
Especially in an area with a lot of pine needles coming in.
The only clay courts that are in the area that I know of are at the country club, that they have grass and clay.
And they have people and money to maintain them.
Right. So...
How many courts?
Um, well, the, the proposal was to do a replacement of that, which is, you know, two courts, right? And Marty has some diagrams on how to turn two courts into what he calls mixed-use, how to, how to re-line them. So if you do two standard, you know, sized tennis courts, and then you...
You could do four pickleballs?
Something like that, right? There's a configuration and alignment so that they can be shared use.
Yeah, Patton Park, they, they do that all the time.
So that was about, so about the, you know, about the footprint of the courts was, it's really just, let's get, let's get two more tennis courts, and like, let's not try to expand from there. If they're very successful at raising money for some reason, sure, put in a third, right? You know, but that's not the initial...
If you can find somebody who will actually do all this labor and has the expertise to do it, like we did with the structures that we're building. And I, you know, if, if that's out there, great. If it's not out there, you're talking about something that's going to be at prevailing wage, and it's going to be up, it's going to be north of $300,000.
It makes the project a $300,000 project.
Easily, right, yeah.
So this is something, Nate, that you feel that between yourself, Marty, and Dan, you're committed to spearheading and taking the ball and running with it with our, with our blessing?
And it's just, I think just the opportunity, whether it be economic development or just, you know, kind of, I, I personally feel that the Grove is just a completely underutilized asset.
100%.
And...
I like it that way.
It's, it's just, and it has just, it just has so much potential. It's beautiful.
Well, and I look at it, Peter, although I like it that way as well. The Grove is residence-only. It's resident parking only. So this is just another thing that with unbelievable volunteers, we could offer our residents, since we have such a high tax rate, like, hey, this is an opportunity for you to be able to play tennis or pickleball that you're not, you know, fighting for space at Sweeney Park or Patton Park.
That's, the, the good point about that is making sure that indeed, even when the summer camp is in session, if, if they can still use it.
That's right.
Because if we're going to do all these things and say, oh, well, you can't use it now because we have a session, or you can't use it now because we have a wedding, or you can't use, we have to be able to make sure...
Well, if you put it in, in the area behind them, it won't conflict. It won't conflict. In summer camp, YMCA has already said either location they, they would be able to work with. It just needs a separate access. I like the one behind the parking lot.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's convenient.
And I think that we, as the board that manages Centennial Grove, if we were to rent the facility for a wedding, the pavilion, we would just say that Centennial Grove is closed that day to the residents because it's rented for a wedding.
But I don't want to keep doing that, because that's not...
But if you're having a wedding, you can't play pickleball.
That's why I want to go with clay, because you can still play. It's not as noisy.
It's the mallets.
Yeah, it's the ball and the mallet.
It's about, about the noise.
The noise of the mallet, yeah.
And, and with clay, I mean, I've never seen a clay court, but if you're blowing the pine needles off a clay court, inevitably, you're going to wash away, you're going to ruin the court. And we don't maintain things, and it's not as...
The tape is going to break and everything else.
But I think that that's an important point to think about, that if we're going to have rental elsewhere and then we're going to say, oh, you can't use it this day, you, that's just going to cause...
But how often are you going to rent the pavilion?
I'm hearing from you guys that it's going to be a lot. That's why I'm making sure that we think about this. I'm not saying, I, I have, I think this is a great idea. I, I think having courts that are dual is a great idea. It's just making sure that we're doing this with our eyes wide open.
Well, I don't think we're going to solve all these problems tonight. I think really what Nate's looking for is our blessing, how we feel about them going up there versus down at Shepherd Memorial, so that they have a direction to, you know, they can put together a plan to meet with the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any area should be stripped of trees until there's a path forward with...
Right.
With volunteers that can get everywhere, all the way from earthwork to paving to fencing. If we don't have someone to do all of that, then it has to be rethought.
Correct.
And the $50,000 right now, I don't know what you want to do with that. I have it in a note in the, you know, for, for May to think about it. But with volunteers, I guess it would work, because they'd be saying, okay, drop ship these things, which is what we did with the buildings.
Right.
It didn't work in the model where they were going to hire a private contractor to pay for the labor, but it might, it will work, I think, with the volunteers. So we can think about getting that money reprogrammed and maybe a little bit more so that we have the right materials budget for the volunteers.
Would that just be a vote of town meeting, or would the project need to go back to the Community Preservation Committee for reconsideration? Or is it just simply a vote of town meeting, where they haven't necessarily endorsed?
I'll check on that, because right now, the money was for a specific purpose.
Would we want to consider adding money to it?
We can't, because of, then you would have to go out for a request for proposals once it hits over $50,000. It changes.
Right, yeah.
And then...
Well, if it's just for materials, not necessarily, okay? Because if it's, if it's materials where it's $30,000 worth of fencing material and then X, X amount of asphalt, you wouldn't buy those from the same vendor.
Same, right.
So it opens it up very well if volunteers are willing to receive this or that. And if we work up a budget, we might be able to see that there are distinct areas that could be purchased without triggering a bid.
Okay.
Do you think there are volunteers that are capable of doing some of the aspects of the project? I mean, like the fencing, like the asphalt, like grading?
Yeah, um, I, I mean, I'm relying more on Dan's expertise here, obviously, right? Because he's in that, you know, he's, he's much more accustomed to that field. He feels confident that he can get, that he can get it done. So even like, you know, I guess Palazos, Palazos has been teaming up with him, right? On, you know, kind of doing some of the work, like around the barn. So he feels that, you know, kind of doing some of the grading and stuff like that, that they might be, you know? He's, he's feels like, you know, you can bring in professionals, right? You know, the, in order to oversee some of it, and, you know, the, the, the majority of that barn was built between 3:00 PM and 10:00 PM, right? It was just, people after work that were just going and lending a hand, right? And as long as there's someone there that kind of knows what, you know, kind of what they're doing, then, you know, that's, that's how the, the intention would be to kind of move this project along too in a very similar way, right? So I, I am speaking for Dan on kind of closing the gap on how, right? You know, the expertise would come, come in line, but he's expressed confidence that he thinks it can get done.
Okay, and I just wonder, is there places where you would look to see if there's recreational grants out there to help offset some of this?
There, there are, but it comes down to having certain amount of courts to certain dimensions, like the U.S. Tennis Association, we looked at that before. But they're not going to, I don't think they're going to accept a piecemeal. They're going to want an engineer's design, which is going to cost you X amount of dollars, and then they're going to, you know... Because if you're going to apply for a grant, they're going to say, what's your budget? Where's your design?
Well, we also have been, we have chosen not to accept certain grant funds because then we open it up and it's no longer private use. It all of a sudden becomes everyone from the state can use it because it's state-funded. So we have to be careful about where we take grants from.
That's a good point.
Is, is there going to be an official design that's developed by a professional?
I'm sure they'll have to have one. I don't think Dan would move forward without one.
Yeah, it just gets...
And I would think it's not necessarily going to be an engineer. It's probably going to be somebody like Sports Tech that does this all day, every day, and they have...
They know what to do, yeah, but you need some guideline to follow.
We can pay for that, because that's not the same as labor for, for construction.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, the only thing I really did was, if you, if you go back to here, right? So you just kind of have a rough understanding. I think that purple box that I put there, that was roughly, I just went online and said, if you were going to put two tennis courts within, how would the exterior fence dimensions look like? So that's roughly the size.
The pickleball component doesn't change anything, does it? Other than the line?
At the Grove site? No.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have the same area and everything, yeah. It's just that you would have different line and...
Yeah, and so maybe, and then probably actually thinking about it too... Yeah, and so maybe and then probably actually thinking about it too, there's probably some different posts.
Yeah.
And some netting, right?
Yeah.
I don't really know how the mixed-use is managed, but the mixed-use idea is Marty's idea.
I think it's usually a portable net. If you look at Patton Park, they are using half of one tennis court and there's a portable net that goes perpendicular to the tennis net.
Yeah.
And there's playing just on that.
So it's kind of like bring your own.
Yeah, or I think, I think they...
You have to have the net because the net's higher than tennis?
They just move it off to the side. I think the town provides that if you want to play pickleball.
Some people bring their own, some people, you know, have their own.
Right, you just put it off to the side.
Does the board have any other questions for Nate?
As long as we're not voting, I mean, I just want, this is good that it's on our meeting so that the public can hear it. If they have any comments, hopefully somebody will, you know, provide their comments, good or bad. And, you know, I have no problem with it being done.
I can, I mean, just from talking to Marty, as far as just like, there are, for people that want to do the pickleball courts and/or tennis courts centrally, right? There's, I've repeated and I've heard three different arguments in support of that, just for people to consider. One is that this is a central location, but it's not a central location. Right? Two, the Grove site requires cutting down trees, right? Which has environmental impact, right? You could argue that environmental impact, whatever you do here, whatever you do here is also going to have environmental impact. And the third was the YMCA use, which Brendan already...
Won't be an issue in that location.
So to me, it's just a, so based on those three things, it's like the main consideration is do you want to have courts, tennis courts, so let's separate the things. Tennis courts, right, in a central location? Or tennis courts plus pickleball courts at the Grove? I think that's the main decision point. Everything else seems to be kind of...
I think for me, having sat through a lot of these meetings, I see that the chair of the Economic Development Committee's on the line as well. I've been in meetings, Marty's actually joined the board and talked about tennis down here. I think for me, and listening to the residents, they would really like to see pickleball. It seemed, I mean, it's, I'm not even gonna say up and coming. It's been around. I know BZ loves it. People seem to really love pickleball. And given that opportunity, I'd love to see it at the Grove. I've also heard the concerns from the residents and I don't think pickleball is the most appropriate place down here at Shepherd Memorial. So if we're gonna do pickleball, which I think will elevate your fundraising ability, it needs to go to the Grove and I think people will be happy about it.
Sound issue won't be at the Grove.
Not, not at all.
And it'll be blocked by elevation of the hill and everything else.
Right, and I drew out on that map that's in front of you. Those are the two closest residents and they're 900 feet plus away.
And plus there, you know, there's a hill before, you know, that's gonna block much of the sound.
Yeah. Jody, I see that you're online. Jody Harris is the chair of the Economic Development Committee and I know she's been part of the tennis court conversations from the beginning here. Do you have anything to add, Jody?
Yeah, I think all along, we've been talking for the last year or so about moving the project to the Grove. I do believe that it's the best solution for... I don't favor clay courts at all. They're high maintenance. I think that the addition of pickleball will help us to push the fundraising through because actually I was spearheading the fundraising. So we raised a little over $50,000, $60,000 in addition to the town's money. I'm a little concerned because I can't see the placement of where you're looking to the parking lot. Truly, Donna Roy and I have discussed the pavilion rental and she truly feels that the pavilion rental will be full a majority of the high season. So I'm concerned that it's, if it's too close, that sound will carry and that will render the pavilion unrentable. So I want to be very careful about where we place it. I think that the pickleball courts in Manchester, and I've been over there to investigate, you can fit two pickleball courts on one tennis court. I would prefer to have dedicated pickleball courts and dedicated tennis courts. I don't think that the portable nets are the greatest solution and they disappear, they get damaged. Pickleball is in general played four on a court. It's even managed in Manchester where you're not allowed to play singles. You must play doubles for court usage. So think eight people on one tennis court for pickleball. So the noise is quite different than tennis. It's a thwack, which is why the concern or why we absolutely said we were not gonna put pickleball down at Memorial Park. And I have been in discussions with another nonprofit in town and we may be able to park the money there. I'll know more later this week if Marty really needs to close out his nonprofit. Dan and I have discussed this project at length for some time. So I don't know how close the placement of the courts are to the pavilion. It sounds like they're downhill and if I'm going down the hill to the right.
Right, if you're going downhill to the right below where the restrooms will be. So the pavilion to the courts will be blocked by the restroom. So there will be a barrier.
In the slope.
In a slope.
I did, I did just look, what I was just doing with my pencil on that map is that I was trying to measure the distance between the baseball field and the pavilion. Right, and that appears to me maybe about 400 feet. But that's not exactly where the courts are, but if you were trying to situate the courts as close to the baseball field as possible, that'd probably be a distance of about 300 feet.
Perfect.
Has anybody done any studies on pickleball blocking the sound with fence, the fencing?
This was the town of Manchester when they put in the pickleball courts, right?
Yeah.
This is, and I've read through all these. So what they, that's why they hired that company called Pickleball LLC and they did a sound mitigation study, okay? So the sound mitigation study plus the actual sound mitigation was an incremental cost of about $20,000. Right? What they ended up doing, and there was probably about, affected residents were saving between like 80 and 120 feet, right? They also have 127 there, which was kind of knocking down the noise because it was ambient noise. So it's kind of slightly different condition, but they did a whole study, right? What they ended up doing was putting up sound barriers, right? And so what the sound barriers consist of is like a box around the fence, right? With some plastic sheeting. And that's the, so the study plus the sound mitigation was about, you know, 20K. I don't know which one, you know, costs what, right? But that was, they were able to knock it down to a point that residents that were probably about 120 feet away, that it kind of, what they deemed to be fell into background noise. So they did the study, they did the mitigation, they measured the impact afterwards.
Okay.
So you can...
It cuts it down quite a bit from the 500 to 125.
Right, so they, so you can, but there's a whole bunch of, in that case, it's slightly different though because one of the big reasons that they were able to do it at that distance was because of what they said, the ambient noise of the road.
The 127, yeah.
Right, which that site wouldn't have. So I can't really assess, I can't say, like, if you're at the pavilion having a wedding, would you be able to hear the pickleball court at 300 feet? I can't, but that's, that's, the Manchester studies are probably, they're online.
I was just gonna ask you, was it on their website or is it...
Yeah, I can send you, someone, one of the local residents sent me the links.
And I also think weddings generally happen in the evening. Pickleball's gonna stop at, you know, sunset.
As long as we put no lights in.
Well, I mean, we don't, there's no funding for lights, so I don't think that's, that's really far down the road. So generally, Jody, you're in favor of tennis and pickleball going to Centennial Grove versus Shepherd Memorial?
100%. I think it's where it belongs. I also think that we want to be sure that we're not shutting this down. We don't want to have to shut it down if there's pavilion use. We really want our residents to be able to use the recreational site. I think that's important, which is why it was important that it was available during the Y camp sessions.
So one of the things, just to, one of the things that Marty said, right, in this whole, you know, kind of whole discussion, and this was in relation to potentially having to shut it down while the Y was in use, right, was it's in use from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
1:00 PM. We can use it after 1:00 PM.
Okay, so whatever, so it's for this many hours, Monday through Friday, in one season of the year, right? So when it's open is better than what we currently have. That's the way he was trying to phrase it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So even in the case of not being able to use it during, when the pavilion is being used, if that is actually how it came down, not ideal, but better than the current state.
Perfect.
Was there any consideration for looking at sites across from the water treatment plant? Further away?
Well, I mean...
That's all wet. That's all wet.
That's all wet in there, but...
And it's closer to the public.
The pump. You see these blue lines? That's where that, I think the well is.
Yes, so if you were right here.
All right, so, yeah.
In this area, I mean, you're closer to some residences, but...
Yeah, so that hasn't been considered, no?
Yeah, that floods.
This does, yeah, this is all wet in here, right?
That's not a good place.
Does the board have any more questions for Nate? No? Generally, we're not taking a vote for this, but we want to make sure that they have a direction to move. By Straubholz, is everyone happy with the idea of going from Shepherd Memorial to Centennial Grove? Alva?
Yes.
Yes? Peter?
Yes.
Yes, and I am a yes. So I think, you know...
I think it's important you say there'll be no alteration of that site without the board's further approval.
Right, and I think you've heard the discussion. We need, obviously, you have to work out a budget, a specific site plan, no alteration of the area. So you'll be coming back, I'm sure, Nate?
Yeah.
With more meetings, probably with Dan and Marty to present further ideas.
Right. This is just getting over the, can we, is it, will the selectmen consider Centennial Grove as an alternate site?
I think we, it sounds, we're all very happy with that. Yep. Is this regarding the tennis courts, pickleball? Okay. Oh, so...
I can, I can, these guys are both at the DPW meeting.
Great. So Nate can give you the download outside the door, but we're about to let him leave for the evening and get home to dinner. So if there's no further questions, Nate, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. And you have our blessing to move forward at Centennial Grove.
Okay, so my question is, what's the next step about the appropriation?
You need, well, we don't know how much to add unless you have a plan and a budget that takes off the top what your volunteer professionals are gonna be able to come up with. I already have something on for the board to consider for May, which would be a reprogramming of funding and then maybe addition of funding, but that, we won't know what that's gonna be until we know more about the overall cost.
All right, so we have to do, we have to figure out a way to figure out how much it's gonna cost with a volunteer.
Yeah, probably by February.
No, you can have an article on the, if it's Community Preservation Act, that's done by handout at town meeting.
Right, yeah.
It's just a generic article, so there's more time on that.
Okay, all right, so that's the next step.
Sir, if you have a question or comment, just state your name and address.
Sure. Michael Strowman, 17 Maple Street. And I am coming here actually for this issue. I didn't think it was gonna be here right at 7:00. But I was just coming to listen to what discussions are being held on the tennis court issue. I'm kind of surprised to hear that the board is authorizing it to Centennial Grove. Meanwhile, the DPW board has said it's okay to go here too. And there are issues, as you know, there's a lot of issues, pros and cons for both sites. So I'm just wondering how your decision tonight affects the whole issue going forward. Does it preclude the use of this park for a tennis court?
It, I mean, I think the consensus of the board is that this site will not be considered and that the Centennial Grove site is more preferable. We have the chair of the Economic Development Committee online who spoke earlier. And there's pros and cons to both sites, but I think that the pros fire away the cons to this particular site, so...
Isn't this property managed by the Public Works and it's their decision to make...
That's correct.
...the pros and cons?
Mm-hmm.
But you just said you've made determination that this isn't appropriate.
No, no, we've made the determination that Centennial Grove, that we're giving it the blessing to go to Centennial Grove and if it's a volunteer-based effort and that's their preference, we're supporting that. So the Department of Public Works, if they wanted to put tennis courts down there, they would have to come up with the funds. It would be prevailing wage. It would be a very expensive project. This is a volunteer-based project looking to move it to Centennial Grove.
I understand, I understand also that the town has voted through CPA $50,000 to this site.
Correct.
The friends of the park, Flood and company, have funds dedicated to this park. So there're gonna have to be other votes to overturn those votes.
That's right.
To redirect the money.
Correct.
So, and as you know, there's a whole group of people in town who would probably knew this was, discussion was going on tonight, be here to advocate for this park instead of Centennial Grove.
Well, Mike, right now, it's just exploratory. They're saying if this group of volunteers wants to present a more developed plan about the Centennial Grove, they're saying you're not wasting your time necessarily. Please go ahead and do that and then come back and show the board again. There's been no authorization to alter anything at Centennial Grove right now.
Right, and this is a volunteer-based effort. So if you and your fellow residents or the group that you're representing wanted to come back with a presentation to the DPW and do tennis courts down here because you felt passionate about them being down there as tennis courts, because I know that pickleball is not approved down here, then you could certainly do that. It would be a second volunteer effort, but the volunteers that have come before us are suggesting tennis and pickleball at Centennial Grove.
Okay, I don't think, you know, I'm just advocating for tennis here, not pickleball. And obviously, there's a lot of reasons why. I just, so in other words, you're gonna have two groups in town, one going to the DPW board and one going to your board, competing with arguments for why this site is best. So in the event that both boards decide either site is acceptable to them, how does that get resolved?
It's gonna come down to town meeting, Mike, because there would then be competing proposals potentially on the town meeting floor with respect to the portion of the money, if any, that the town would need to provide. And right now, there's $50,000 for materials only over here. That's it.
Well, if it's, I don't know what you're defining purely voluntary for Centennial Grove. Is that for the whole budget or are you planning on using the money that's dedicated for this park?
It can't be used over there without going through town meeting. So it's really not anything the board can talk about tonight. There would be proposals put forth to the town meeting, depending on how this shapes up between now and town meeting.
Okay. A lot more to discuss on this, I think. But it's your call and I understand it's exploratory at this point and I imagine the other groups in town will try to counter with an exploratory proposal to the other board.
There's nothing stopping that. They have the authority and jurisdiction over this site. But they don't have necessarily any money unless they go through town meeting as well.
Right. Now, would you see any merit in the two boards getting together to talk this over in some sense? I initially thought that would be a good idea. I spoke to Mike Galley earlier in the week. He informed me, of course, their board meets tonight too. So it'd have to be a special arrangement made down the road between the boards to communicate. But right now, we have, it appears that two boards are sort of acting independently. They may not know what the other ones are hearing or discussing and decisions being made.
Well, so the two boards manage, so the Department of Public Works manages Shepherd Memorial and the Board of Selectmen manages the land at Centennial Grove. So we have the authority to speak on behalf of the property that we're, that we oversee. So I agree with you. I would love the DPW to meet on the opposite Monday because I personally would love to attend their meetings to stay well-informed of what is going on. I would have loved to have been at that meeting, but because we meet on the same Monday, it does make it very difficult. But because it's, I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to meet with them, but I'm not sure that if you have a volunteer group that's looking to put this effort forward and they're talking about doing a good majority of all of the labor or hiring out whatever they need to do, bringing in the materials...
Or raising money.
I'm sorry?
Or raising money to get the work done by contractors.
So I guess my point is, you're not gonna look a gift horse in the mouth if you're looking to beautify your town and bring some sort of an asset to your community. So if we have people looking to step up and do that, I fully support it. This particular group has done an amazing job already at Centennial Grove and they're only adding to the asset of this town. And so I, that's how I feel about it. That's my personal opinion. The board's not speaking. That's just how I feel. So I support them going up there. I think it would be an amazing use of the space and I think a lot of people would benefit. Down here, you would just be looking at tennis courts because we've already, I think there's already been conversations in the past about pickleball being a problem for residents if it were here at the park. So and there's a lot of people in town that are very partial to pickleball.
Yeah, well, I understand that and that issue's gotta be dealt with. And again, that's a use of the, you know, Public Works group are gonna have to make that decision, but certainly, there's a massive amount of benefits to being here for tennis. I mean, there's a lot of pros here, as you've probably read. And I think it may be beneficial... I mean, there's a lot of pros here, as you've probably read, and I think it may be beneficial for everybody here, the pros and cons of both sites.
Sure.
It might, may come down to that town meeting when positions are being laid out and the warrant, depends how it's drafted to...
Absolutely.
For the town, so, thanks for your time, and...
Alva, you have a question?
I just want to say, I don't have a question, but I want to make a recommendation. We are being recorded. You may want your group to also listen to the discussion we had, so that you understand what we discussed since you came in later.
Sure, sure. So, to be clear, the, the, the proposal being made for volunteer work is for just pure volunteer, no, no public funds being used down at Centennial Grove?
Materials. Drop shipment of materials that the volunteers would use.
So, so the public funds would be diverted to, for material supplies?
Through town meeting.
Through town meeting. The funds that are set for over here cannot be used down there without the town meeting changing, and perhaps the Community Preservation Committee changing the way that they are earmarked.
Is there any sense in what the budget would be for those materials?
No, because it's, that's the whole thing. Until we have the volunteers lay out what they think they can cover versus what they need provided to them, we have no idea. This is just, this is the very first time that this board has publicly discussed the topic. This is the very beginning. We're on day one.
So, the first deliverable, I may have missed it, is there something expected of this group to present to you in the future in terms of a budget?
The selectmen are expecting a budget, some kind of site plan. How much is going to be covered by people, how much labor is going to be covered by volunteers? Do they need a designer? But we've already discussed all that, and I know that the board needs to move on.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you. Oh, you have a question? Go ahead.
Steve Davis at Lemon Lowland Farm Road. I will not, if this was already discussed with Nate, that's fine. I wanted to make a point on, am I too loud?
Nope, you're great.
Wanted to make a point on why the courts here, and that would be my first choice, be near Town Hall, but it's not feasible. So I don't know if, Nate, you were able to talk about the courts being in the flood zone, the ones here near Town Hall?
He did go through all of that.
Went through all the reasons why it's not feasible?
The board needs to move on to the next step.
Okay, no, no, as long as it's covered, then we're good. Thank you.
And this can be viewed on sixteen twenty-three Studios, right through YouTube. It usually takes a couple of days to upload, but it's usually two to three days, and you just type in YouTube, and then sixteen twenty-three Studios Essex Selectmen, and it'll be up there. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Did we have any items that could not be anticipated before this?
I have none.
Okay, perfect. So, Beesee, why don't we go over to your report? Also, I just want to mention for anybody joining us for the seven o'clock appointment with Dan Mayer that we are tabling that to a date that we don't have at this point. So that'll just come off the agenda until Mr. Mayer reaches back out to us, should he so choose.
Oh, we skipped that, yeah.
So with respect to a design for the, cost for the municipal fuel depot, prior to town meeting, I had spoken with Ty &amp; Bond, Fussin' O'Neil, TEC, as well as Barton &amp; Wilcox, about how much it would cost just to get a design done, and at least two of them said, "For twenty-five thousand dollars, you ought to be able to get a design done." One of those two never got back to me after town meeting when I said, "We have twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, what can we do?" One of the two firms that said twenty-five would be adequate, bless you. One of the two firms that said twenty-five would be adequate has now come back with me just today, just tonight, just before I got here tonight, and they now have a price of like two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars on the table for the design.
Just for the design?
Yep, and that was similar to what?
Who was this?
Fussin' O'Neil.
Oh, right.
And, see, they had given, what you have in front of you is what they had given out as like, "Here would be the scope of work," and we were talking out loud with them. That's not it. It's in your package, but that's not it. Looks like this. With the bullets?
Yes.
Okay. Prior to town meeting, they had sent, they had emailed me this after our discussion, and the person I spoke to said, "Yeah, twenty-five should cover it. Here's kind of the types of things that we would probably see covered under that." But today, I got a very different proposal.
I don't think that was in the package.
I think it was, but...
I have it in my package.
Do you?
I have it in my...
In any case, they're now singing a different tune. We did reach out, TEC, we reached out to them, because we've done work with them, and they were like almost three-hundred thousand dollars. You know, Ty &amp; Bond got back to us with a proposal, and I had kind of put them aside, because the first proposal I got was obviously a proposal from some other project, and it was talking about replacement of existing pumps and all this stuff. I'm like, "You didn't even listen to what I had to say." And then a couple more times, they came back with revisions, a couple more times, because I still called out the fact that it didn't, wasn't right, and it's mostly right now, and it almost sounds like they're willing to do it for the money, but I'm not very impressed with my interactions. So, I'm not really sure where to go with this. I would like to continue to try to get Barton &amp; Wilcox to talk to me, because that was the other one that said, "Yeah, twenty-five thousand, we can do a design for you." Now, that doesn't include, that doesn't include engineering services during construction, but we would fund that at the construction stage. I'm just talking about...
Did we get a town meeting, recall?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand, and that verbally, this is what they were saying, they were going to do this?
Yeah, but that's not how it came back. After their team went back, and they're like, "Well, there are a lot of unknowns," is what they said on the phone message. There aren't a lot of unknowns. We have, we have flat ground off of a paved service, surface, you would have to put in some kind of a loop to let vehicles...
Come and go.
Come in and then turn around, and then a pad in the ground, and some tanks that are readily available and easy to specify. So I really am at a loss as to how anyone can come back with anything over fifty grand, let alone two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollars for the design. So, what I'd like to do here is go back to a couple of these companies and see what else I can get in a scope of work from them, that they put twenty-five thousand dollars with a scope of work that's going to get us something. I think it's doable. I just don't know why the other, there's one that I think will give us that, but I wasn't really happy with their performance to date, and there's another one that talked about it, but then radio silence after I told them we got the money.
You only get one chance to make a first impression.
Yeah, well, and as you know, I'm not, I'm a little bit gun-shy with respect to engineers that...
That promise you one thing and then deliver something else?
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's, let's revisit this.
I'll see what I can get.
Push them a little. Have you, by any chance, asked Scott DeWitt who he used for his tank?
No, I can't.
I'm wondering, because his tank is relatively new. And they may be more local.
Yep, I'll ask him.
Did you talk to any of these guys? Did you talk to any of these guys about how long it would take to do a plan? Because we want this in advance of town meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's doable.
Yeah, well, we hope.
They're talking about these grand site surveys, and like, "We own all the land. What are you talking about?" I mean, here's the topo. You almost be able to walk out there and look at it, you know, and that's not what I'm getting. I'm getting all of these adders and all of these services that I didn't ask for. This is not rocket science.
The two-hundred-and-fifty would just be for the design, so then the actual construction and the actual...
Well, that's probably like six-hundred thousand. That's what I'm hearing.
Maybe ten times that.
At this point.
And my hesitation showing you, I'm not really for this in the first place, but now that you're telling me...
Well, that's why the board said, "Okay, for twenty-five thousand dollars, we're going to find out. We're going to, we're going to get a layout and a cost estimate." Right? And then if you don't like it from there, you stop. But who's going to spend two, three-hundred thousand dollars and then find out you don't like it? That's not a good idea.
Well, and let's not forget that this was one of the finance committee's issues, was we haven't vetted this well at this point, because we need to know how much fuel you're using, you know, how many gallons they're using, what the state bid cost is. So there's still some unknowns from a financial perspective to figure out what your break-even is. So if you were to...
What cost to buy a truck? Two trucks?
Which truck?
One, one gas and one diesel. Because I could, you know, I could drive.
Well, you could use a fueling, there are fueling services.
Fueling trucks, I got you.
Fueling services will come to the DPW yacht and to the fire station, and they will fuel, they will fuel up the diesel vehicles. That's another alternative, potentially. But are you going to be able to get them in the middle of a blizzard? Probably not, and that's, this was all about having surety.
Go empty at the same time.
Right, exactly. This would be about having your own control over...
I get it, I do, I get it. But at the same time...
But at what cost?
At what cost?
Right.
If you're putting in, you know, a million dollars to have a fuel depot?
What's the payback?
Yeah, where's...
What's the rate of return? Are we going to, you know, sorry, that seems like...
And again, it was twenty-five thousand dollars to find out what you're going to get and for how much, and we're not there yet, so I'm going to keep...
What's your plan to?
I'm going to go back, I'm going to go back to Barton &amp; Wilcox. Told me, "Yeah, we can do that," and never...
Submit anything?
Nope. When I told them we had the money, I never, I keep asking, and I keep getting nothing. And Ty &amp; Bond, I'll say, "Okay, can you give me what, go ahead, give me your proposal."
What did they do the first time? Nothing?
They were interested from the beginning, but they kept coming, giving me versions of a proposal that weren't even related to what I wanted.
Old plans.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a proposal to replace pumps that were already there, and tanks that were already there. I'm like, "Where did you get that?" You know, so... And I don't like to start off that way with the engineering firm. It's not a good idea. But I will get, for your, for your edification, I will get what they're peddling.
And anybody else who does these plans, you know, I mean, maybe there's somebody else out there that...
I have really blanketed, I've talked to people that know the different places that do this commonly, and I think I'm up to five firms. I will see what Mr. DeWitt did for his marina tank. See if it's one of the same, or is maybe there's someone else out there. But I'll bring it back again. I was expecting that tonight, the proposal would come in, it would be twenty-five thousand or less with the scope that I gave you, and we would be moving on right now. But it came in ten times that, after I had a discussion with them, so I don't understand. That's all I have on that one. With respect to the request for the annual operating budget and capital request proposal, we're expecting that that official request for the, for these proposals from the Finance Committee will come out probably this week. In anticipation of that, I put together the first cut at a list of articles for town meeting in, in May, and I put in bold the things that are financially related. Just to give you a smattering of it, there's really not a need to discuss any of this in detail. In your next meeting on the sixteenth, I will actually have the first pass at the capital budget and the operating budget for all the budget lines controlled by the selectmen, and then you'll have a second pass at that on January sixth, because it won't be due until January tenth. I don't know if you had any comments at this stage, but it's just a highlight of some of the things that will probably show up in the budget package.
I have two comments. The first is the purchase or lease purchase of a new fire tanker truck. I, I mean, holding a place there on first tier is fine at the moment. I do feel that we had looked at that seriously for Fall Town Meeting, because we knew we had free cash to be able to do that without having to take a loan. I would prefer to see this maybe go to Fall Town Meeting, when we know we have certified free cash again. The other, I know that they really wanted to see what would happen with the grant, and I think that the recommendation that I made when, for this next round of grant funding would be that we try to strengthen our grant by having you look at it, and/or Val look at it, and potentially get letters of support, knowing that our tanker goes to so many of our surrounding communities as far-reaching as Heartbreak Reservation in August last summer. Our tanker spent quite a bit of time this year in Middleton, North Redding, North Andover, and I think if we did, you know, a radius of all of the towns that our tanker has been to, many of those communities would probably provide letters of support to strengthen that application. So, I'm just a little reluctant to wanting to finance something that I think we could potentially get covered.
I'll move that to Fall Town Meeting, and right now, as you know, at, at the annual, at the Fall Town Meeting this year, there was money moved into a maintenance line, because they have to keep the tanker on the road, and there was ten thousand dollars, and we don't know the result of that yet. Hopefully, it will, it will keep operating until you have another solution.
Well, and so that was what I was going to say, is maybe we leave it on first tier and maybe italic it, so that once we hear what the repair was. Because if they can accomplish that repair, and they think it's going to get us to fall, great, we'll leave it at fall. But if they say, "We have no tanker," then we need to reconsider where this stays. So maybe we leave it, but talk about it again. And then my second one is halfway down, funding for additional capital improvements in the cottage area of Centennial Grove. My question there is, you know, knowing that we were going to hear a proposal tonight about the tennis courts, and that we're moving on with the restrooms, do we really want to take on another project of the cottage?
You got to get the restrooms done, and then the courts done.
I feel like putting this here is just more than we should be taking on at this time.
Fortunately, fortunately, you have a new roof on the garage and on the cottage. That's the most important thing. So that can go off to...
I would prefer, yeah, why don't we put that to...
Third tier?
Third tier for right now.
Okay. Any other comments at this stage?
I'm fine with everything else the way it reads.
All right. The next thing on my report has to do with just an update on the sale of the former Allen Properties. Of course, this was discussed only in executive session, so all I could say right now is that we are still waiting from the attorney that represents the buyer for more information. And it's on the agenda, because we didn't know what stage it might be at by the time we got to this meeting. With respect to the Protect Grant, which we discussed at the last meeting, in speaking with the lead person at Mass DOT that is very interested in partnering with the town on this, he's looking at an eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar project to study the matter and even come up with some engineering drawings and some potential solutions. And that would follow on closely to the MPO study that's being done right now, which we will have, hopefully, their final recommendations sometime in January for a February Protect Grant application. I've been working directly with the DOT on the application, because that got released, and the DOT actually has access to engineering consultants on a regular basis, and they're actually going to bring in one of their consultants to take a look at what we've done and strengthen it even more. So that thing's well on its way, and it's, you know, it's possible that something that started as a couple of questions on an MPO survey is going to end up at a, you know, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar study of the matter. I hope, I hope it does take shape that way.
I really hope, though, that it's not, well, you got that from them, and now we have to do it ourselves, and it's going to cost, you know what I mean?
No, no, no. It's, no...
No, they're very open to finding out what, what the MPO is going to put together, and then MPO, actually, is right now working to meet with some people from the Chamber of Commerce, even before they even make their recommendations, so that they can get the business perspective on the matter. Because of course, you could elevate that causeway tomorrow, but then you'd have problems with the businesses. And so they want to hear what the feedback is, what are the concerns and comments, before they even get down, down the road with some other type of solution.
And the, yeah, this is really sort of an alternatives analysis. What do we do? And one of the good things is that Apple Street wasn't all for naught, because that's one of the primary alternatives that's really been vetted. So, they won't have to spend a lot of time looking at that, and there won't be many questions on that.
And a lot of the figures and graphs and things that we made for Apple Street are going to be directly applicable, and some of them are going to show up in the grant application for the causeway. So it wasn't a waste, which is good.
Peter, tell me, in your meetings with them, was a second alternative ever discussed about the connection between Rocky Hill Road and Andrews Court?
No.
Okay. I'm just curious.
And they would never, I mean, I have no idea. This is my first time ever seeing something like this, as far as... They'd never walk in and say, "Okay, well, all these businesses to the right you got to get rid of, and we can..." You know, like, I just don't know what...
They could.
In theory, they would say, "Okay, find a federal program that will buy these properties, and then just elevate the causeway." Everything is on the table, but not in a, not in a heavy-handed way with businesses. It's going to be, "Hey, you know, everybody knows this is going to be an issue. What are the alternatives? What are the..." What are the alternatives, what are the options? And, you know, DOT doesn't even have a sense of how this is going to go because we're going to be one of the first really problem roadways that they're going to have, that they are going to tackle, they're starting with a very difficult one.
In someplace like Nahand hasn't gone through something like this?
No.
Wow.
No, the, the other location they're looking at is up on Salisbury Beach along 1A there, that stretch. They're not even looking at it, but it's problematic, similar to the causeway here. And they haven't tackled that yet, I think this is an easier option than looking up there because that's miles of elevation.
And the guy we're working at with DOT is really the guy that's been tasked with, hey, start taking this on. And we, we got their attention because the MPO brought them in for us and we've been, you know, we've been after them for a while anyway with the district director and he's been good to us. And it's shaping up and I just hope it all comes together.
So far, it seems like they're willing to tackle this, you know? What comes out of it, we don't know, but-
But if they're going to do one, we might as well be the one, right?
Yeah, right.
That's the way we're looking at it.
We'll see what it is.
Great. I will entertain a motion for the authorization of a grant application to the Protect Grant Program with Mass DOT as the lead applicant in the town and possibly MPO as co-applicants, including authorizing the chairman to sign any necessary documents during the application process.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
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 And then finally on the report, the Gloucester-Coltar settlement, as we discussed briefly in the past, Selectman Fitton and I had a chance to meet with some personnel from the city, the, the Community Development Director and the City Planner, to see if there were projects that were mutually agreeable. Because we know that proximity to the original contamination is one of the major determinators of which projects are going to get funded. And that gives Gloucester, I think, a lot of, a lot of sway and we want to align with what, what they might want to do. Right now, they were interested in considering shellfish seeding because, you know, shellfish population is down and they have the same issue. Green crab drying, funding, right, funding equipment that would go to a commercial operation to dry these things out for fertilizer, creating a new market. Thin layer sediment placement, you know, they have the same concerns about the marsh and its ability to help protect the built environment. Alewife habitat restoration with respect to Alewife Brook, possibly coupled up with their major alewife run, which is the Little River. And this week, I hope to hear back from them and I'll, you know, let you know how things align. But we don't really want to put a lot on the, on the, on the map, if you will, without trying to align with, with, we think, the partner that's going to have the most influence.
And can I just ask you, when you say the shellfish seeding, is this in a particular, in the spot or is it anywhere or like?
Within the clamming areas for both communities, so primarily Essex Bay.
And that's what I wanted to make sure, it's within the clamming for both communities and not-
Essex Bay.
Yeah, we want this, but we want it here in our, in our sand.
No, and you know, a lot of Gloucester clambers park at Canone Point because that's how they're getting the Gloucester flats, it's the same system.
Right.
Different boundary, but the same system. Now, the deadline to turn in the project ideas is the 19th, which is just a few days after your next meeting. You know, given what I have here, do you have any issue with, with Selectman Fitton and I hearing back from Gloucester and then putting in what we think is-
Absolutely not.
Most reasonable?
Depending on what, these were ideas that we proposed to them, they didn't have their list of ideas yet, but these were ones they were amenable to and they were going to check with the other departments and boards in town, in the city to see what they thought of, what they had for ideas and what they thought of our ideas. And that's what we're waiting to hear back and we may even, even if they don't agree wholeheartedly with some of these, we may put them in anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, over the years, we've touched upon almost every one of these with the exception of the green crab drying for fertilizer. We've touched on each of these things at some point in time, so it's a great list, I think it's great. Do you think we should take a motion in case anything needs to be signed outside of a meeting to have Peter do that?
I don't think it does because it's just an open-
Open solicitation for ideas, yeah.
This is not, it's actually not even a competitive grant in that sense. It's, can you put, you know, a few paragraphs down and then if, if that piques our interest, we're going to get back to you. It's, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
So, Peter, you have our blessing.
Good, yeah, no, this is exciting, it's, you know, low, low odds, but unless Gloucester comes in, as Brendan said, they're, you know, they're really in the driver's seat with all this because of their proximity and the pollution was done in their territory, so we're just trying to ride the coattails with something that is not just beneficial for Essex and Gloucester, but some of these are even beyond that.
I'm going to take the licenses as one motion, but before I do that, does anybody have any questions on any of the licenses as listed on page two, three, four, or five of the agenda? Are there any questions?
No.
So for anybody that's listening, I'm just going to quickly tell you what the licenses are that we're looking at.
Before we do that, did we table the Allen property?
The Allen property update was that we met in executive session and all that we can say is that the buyer's attorney is, where, is forthcoming more information.
Part of Brendan's report, but we also have it as a bullet under other business.
Yeah, it was, it ended up in two places, but neither one of them really can say much more until we get more from the, the buyer.
Yep.
So for the licensing, we are going to be renewing, we have a lot of annual renewals this evening, which is why I'm keeping it brief. We have the all alcoholic beverage restaurant license renewals for calendar year 25, the all alcoholic beverage package store license renewals for calendar year 25, wine and malt package store license renewals for calendar year 25, common victular license renewals for calendar year 2025, annual weekday entertainment license renewals for calendar year 2025, annual Sunday entertainment license renewal calendar year 2025, antiques license renewals calendar year 2025, automatic amusement license renewals for 2025, class two license renewals for 2025. We have a one-day wine and malt and we have a municipal street light, uh, street license renewal for calendar year 2025. So there's no questions from the board and the motion I'm going to make is, as per usual, every year, we make sure that all of the businesses are current with their taxes, water, sewer, and everything is in good standing before we renew. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve all of the licenses as listed on page two, three, four, and five, contingent upon each of the businesses not starting operation on January 1st, 2025, unless all taxes, water, and sewer are paid in full prior to commencement.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then for reminders, first one is that the memory tree celebration will take place on Thursday, December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. That is held here in the front of Town Hall at our beautiful tree, 30 Martin Street. And then the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, December 16th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the third floor of the auditorium here at Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. Next is public comment, we have no one in the room with us this evening, is there anybody online that has public comment? If you do, please unmute yourself and state your name and address. Okay, hearing no public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:39 PM.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye.